Ideal, the idea of the cars entering and leaving.
I, I believe they addressed it by making an effort. So, I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Rocco?
No, I'm satisfied.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Boraski?
No.
All right. Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add?
No, we're comfortable with the plan as presented.
All right, and this is Resolution 21 hyphen 21?
Correct.
2121. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Oh, I'm sorry, was there any public comment for this?
No, and, and just for record, I'm opposed as well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We have no public comment.
All right. All right, resolution passes though, congratulations.
Thank you guys, good night.
All right, have a good night. Okay. Item number four, consider approval of a resolution adopting and submitting a plan revision for new land development to the PA Department of Environmental Protection for approval in connection with updating the Township Act 537 Sewer Facilities Plan reflecting the redevelopment of the existing Keystone Industrial Park Complex by North Point Development. Mr. Clark?
But Jeff, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear you because they didn't have me in the room.
Okay, we didn't start yet.
You're not on this one, Karen.
Oh, okay.
You're number five.
Okay, thanks.
This is a simple revision to the Township's Act 537 Plan. The 537 Plan is the sewage planning, plan for the township. Since North Point is putting in some additional sewer lines that have previously unsewered areas, and since the sewage facility down there is being changed over from US Steel to North Point to Morrisville Municipal Authority, the 537 Plan has to be updated. And so the resolution reflects, reflects those changes.
Any questions for Mr. Clark from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No, no questions.
Mr. Rocco?
No.
Mr. Boraski?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
And I have none. So this is a resolution as well? This is Resolution 22. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mrs. Brown Dorff, now you're up.
Okay, thanks.
Conduct a public hearing on and consider approval of a resolution adopting and submitting a special study on the Township Sewage Facility Management Plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection reflecting the sale of the privately owned wastewater facilities known as the US Steel Fairless Hills Wastewater Treatment Plant to Morrisville Municipal Authority. Mr. Clark?
Since the sewage facilities down at the KIP site are being transferred from, from US Steel to North Point to Morrisville Municipal Authority, DEP requires that a public hearing be held where members of the public who have an interest in this transfer can come forward. So, Mr. Dents, if you could have a motion to open the hearing?
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And so this is a public hearing to consider approval of a resolution adopting and submitting a special study on the Township Sewage Facilities Management Plan to the PA Department of Environmental Protection reflecting the sale of the privately owned wastewater facilities known as the US Steel Fairless Hills Wastewater Treatment Plant to the Morrisville Municipal Authority. Mr. Dents, you should ask if there are any members of the public who are present and wish to make comment on the sale of the sewage treatment facilities from US Steel to Morrisville Municipal Authority.
All right, is there any public comment on this item?
I'm Todd Campbell, the authority engineer for Morrisville Municipal Authority. Just to recap, in, in December of 2020, the board approved a resolution, Resolution Number 2036, approving the sale of the system to Morrisville, and also in December 23rd, TOFA acknowledged and reached an agreement with Morrisville to agree to the sale of the system to Morrisville Municipal Authority. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members?
I have no questions.
I have none.
Straightforward. Any questions, Mr. Jones, or anyone else, Mr. Tequita? And there's no public comment needed?
No public comment.
Pretty straightforward.
Ask Mr. Jones if he has any, any comments?
Mr. Jones, you have any comments?
No comments, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
I do have one comment. Is that plant going to be treating leachate back there, or, I know Morrisville was doing it years back?
No, that plant, the US Steel plant, has no intention of treating leachate. Morrisville currently treats leachate at their, at their, their Morrisville wastewater treatment plant. Morrisville does intend or hopes to build a new wastewater treatment plant on the US Steel property and has purchased 54 acres of land on the, on the US Steel property in order to build a new wastewater treatment plant. I think that there's been several news recording, news reportings of that intent.
Do they plan on doing leachate at that plant?
They, leachate would most likely be coming still from Waste Management. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
There are no other questions, a motion to close the hearing, and then a vote to adopt the resolution would be in order.
All right, is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21 hyphen 23?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number six, consider stipulations to settle on appeal. Gatehouse Media PA Holdings, Inc., tax parcel 13028062012, docket numbers 202006469. This is, I believe, the Carrier Times building, is that correct? Or do we not even know?
I am, I am not sure what building this is.
And this is, you want to explain this to us, Mr. Clark?
Sure, this, the property owner, Gatehouse Media PA Holdings, Inc., owns the property located at Two Joffrey Road, and they have filed an appeal of their, their tax assessment. The assessment was $449,400, and an appeal was filed, and the parties have decided to settle this matter. Mostly, the school district, who, as you are aware, has the lion's share of the tax dollars go to the school district. Normally, the township and the county follow along with what the school district is going to do, and they have decided to settle this matter, and the assessment will be decreased from $449,400, $449,400 to $315,950. And any refunds that are doing, owing from any of the taxing authorities will be returned to the property owner.
Right. There's no questions from board members on this? This is straightforward. Is there a motion, or is there a public comment needed?
Public comment, no public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven is the same thing, different tax parcel. I believe this one is the Sheraton right here on Oxbury Valley Road. So it's the same thing, right, Mr. Clark?
It's, it's the same thing, it's a tax assessment appeal. The property has an assessed value of $1,203,600. The taxpayer filed an appeal, so effective January 1st for the municipal and county taxes, that amount will be reduced to, to $750,000, and it should remain at $750,000 until a subsequent appeal is filed. And again, if there are any overpayments, they are returned to Ashford Bucks County LLC, which is the entity that owns, owns the property. And again, this is, the school district has decided to settle this matter, and the county and the township will follow along.
All right, is there any questions from board members?
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comment needed on this one?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number eight, consider manager to finalize the award bid for the Falls Township Community Park Hockey Rank Improvement Project. All right, the, the review for the responsible contractor will be over before our next meeting, so we're basically going to give Mr. Tequita permission to finalize the award, and then we'll ratify it at our next meeting, correct, Mr. Clark?
That is correct.
Any questions from board members?
None.
None?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine. Consider the 2020 to 2021 diesel unleaded fuel bids for Falls Township. Mr. Tequita, you want to take us through this one?
Board is being asked to consider approving or awarding the consortium bid for fuel to Papco Incorporated on two new roads, Suite 311 in Aston, PA, for unleaded regular fuel and for ultra-low sulfur diesel.
All right, and this is, we're part of the consortium with all the other townships that go in on this to get the best as possible. Any questions on this one for board members?
Nope.
Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, that takes us to item number 10, authorization for advertisement for bids for the historical Three Arches Roof Replacement. Three Arches needs a new roof. This is just us going at the bid, correct?
Correct.
Just advertising?
Yes, just authorization to advertise.
Is this a roof, like, any roofing company can do this, or do they have to be, like, certified to do the historic type roofing?
It's a, it's a cedar shingle roof.
Oh, yeah.
It does take-
Especially stipe stuff. All right, any questions from board members? Mr. Palmer? Mr. Galloway or Boraski?
Nope.
No.
Any public comment needed? Again, we're just advertising, is there a motion?
No public comment.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 11 is tabled. Item 12, consider adopting parks ordinance amending Section 17, Community Park Regulations, and Section 20, miscellaneous provisions. Ms. Gallagher, I believe this is yours?
Yes, thank you. This ordinance has been advertised and is ready for adoption this evening. A little close to the mic. It does several things. And they're set forth in Exhibit A to the ordinance. One of the things is it prohibits, it adds weighting to the list of prohibited activities. It also discusses, or it prohibits, the release of helium balloons into the atmosphere, and, as well as aerial luminary lanterns, which are considered a fire hazard.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gallagher from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Rocco?
No.
Mr. Boraski?
This was just in our parks, correct?
In our parks, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All of the parks?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
This is ordinance number 24?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. All right. Item 13, consider, consideration of amended proposal for engineering services for the 2020 road program, road improvement program. Mr. Tequita?
Yes. Board is being asked to consider an amended proposal for the engineering services for the 2020 road program. Due to COVID, there was considerable construction delays. However, Jones Engineering still had need to be on site to address residents', resident concerns, as well as other safety issues during that time period. Because of that, the work extended past the actual construction allotted time, so these requesting additional time to close out the, the road program.
Any questions for Mr. Tequita or Mr. Jones from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Rocco?
No.
Mr. Bor- Boraski?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
I have no questions. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, that brings us to item 14, minutes from June 21st. Any corrections needed or errors? Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pull, and I'm sure it's not easy, still being remote. None, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain, I was actually moving my son out of college that day, so I wasn't able to make the meeting.
Is that what you're saying you were doing?
Yeah, sticking to it.
15, engineers report, Mr. Jones?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the engineers report for the month of June shows that we had two new earth disturbance applications submitted, one new land development and one cell tower application. As usual, the highlights are identified in red. The KIP Fairless Hills Wawa and Bum Holdings were addressed tonight. The other updates I'll mention, North Point Phase 1, that's the fill operation that's going on, they're operating under an MPDS permit and our earth disturbance approval, and they're benchmark filling up the three building pits. The Tyburn Road Associates was approved last month by the supervisors. The Raising Cane's project is a new submission, and that's a fast food chicken establishment that's going to take over the old Macaroni Grill, that will be before the planning commission next week. In terms of the earth disturbance applications, the red highlights indicated on the middle column are all completed, and the highlighted ones from the right column are all approved. So there's one project in the middle of that called Old Tyburn Road, just mentioned to the board that that's the same project that we had from before for Beck, it was the Beck Storage Yard, that's just changed ownership, and so that's why that's labeled on that side and was recently resubmitted. In terms of the township projects, the 2020 road program, all concrete and Burgess matter will be poured by tomorrow, sidewalks and aprons, and all residents will have access to their driveways by the end of next, by the end of this week. Hedgerow Woods, the wearing course will be applied either late this week or early next week, and that section will be substantially complete. In terms of the 2021 road program, that's Elderberry and a significant mill and overlay section. The mill and overlay is about 95% complete, there are two roads that have to be overlaid. They are Nancy Accord and the Stub Road leading towards Falsington Woods, and those were delayed so that we could provide survey data to the contractor so that they could handle ponding that was in those intersections. But they will be done this week as well. And the Elderberry reconstruction will likely start late next week or the first week of August. So those are my highlights.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, number 13 in your report speaks to restoration of the stream bank at the county park?
Yes.
And plans were submitted, it was submitted in December of 2019, do you know where that's at right now?
We, we pushed back a little bit, we had an issue with the engineering. They, it's in a floodplain, and the floodplain wasn't properly addressed by the applicants and by the county's engineer. And so we issued concerns in a form of a, of an email and memo, and we have yet to see revised plans come back, and they haven't called us to, to try to move the project forward. It's a county project, and we'd like to see it go forward for the stream bank, but, but they, they were making significant changes to the floodplain, and we didn't get the calculations to show that there was going to be no rocks.
All right, well, thank you.
Yep, and I'll follow up, or Mr., I'll follow up with the applicant's engineer if you'd like me to.
I would, thank you, sir.
Any other questions from board members?
No.
No.
So the Raising Cane is a fast food restaurant going where the Macaroni Grill was? I'm not familiar with Raising Cane.
That's correct, and I believe it's, it's a, it's an organization that's pretty popular in the southern states, and they're moving up into the northeast, and, and they, they do chicken fingers, and they do them either in, I think it's 6' 9" or 12", so it's a simple menu, they say they do them right, and, and we're kind of excited.
That's it? Chicken fingers?
Yeah, I've had them.
Good?
Yeah, they're okay.
Got my attention. All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. That takes us to the bill list. 2.5, over 2.5, $2,540,646.06. $1,133,000 of that is payroll. That includes $704,000 of the general asphalt. Workers' comp insurance, a couple hundred, $50,000. Water and cable, $50,000. Any questions on the bill list from board members or comments?
I have none.
None.
No question.
No question.
Public comment needed for the bill list?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to pay the bills?
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
I'm a yes.
Okay, that takes us to item 17, we have two executive sessions to comment on, Mr. Clark? I believe.
We do, we had one earlier this evening, the board discovered a potential litigation personnel, and we also held up on the, on-
July 12th, I think it was.
There was an executive session held on July 12th regarding potential litigation and litigation.
Thank you, Mrs. Gallagher. That takes us to the police report. Chief Whitney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have a written copy of my report for the month of June. If it pleases the board, I'll just hit some highlights. Since our last meeting on July 15th and earlier on June, June 30th, our officers had contact with two individuals experiencing meth psychosis. That's a psychotic condition caused by methamphetamine use, where a person is hearing and seeing things that aren't real. Both instances were handled without being escalated by our officers, so our officers did a good job. It's always troubling to see that in the community. Also, on 7/15, we had a strong-arm robbery at the Wawa on Bristol Park, Bristol Pike. Two of the three actors were arrested, and it's an open investigation that's still being conducted to track down the third. On July 14th, we had a statutory sexual assault at Valley Day School. 38-year-old teacher or teaching assistant had an appropriate relationship with a 14-year-old male student that resulted in an arrest. On the 12th, we had five separate reports, and we actually had reports earlier in the month as well, of unemployment frauds. That, that seems to be a trend that's taking place now, where we're getting reports from many citizens that their name and other identifying information are being used in employment, unemployment frauds, and that's being investigated by our department. On July 10th, we had a traffic pursuit up on Route 13, which was terminated by our officers. We were able to identify the suspect and, and follow up on that. On the 4th of July, we cited 12 people for fireworks violations of our ordinance. Unfortunately, we did have one person down at Penn Warner Club that was injured. I believe he was a 42 or 43-year-old male who had a, an M80 go off in his hand, which caused him hand injuries that resulted in him being hospitalized. That's a dangerous thing every year for us, you always hope somebody isn't seriously injured. On the 1st of July, we had an aggravated assault, which was later upgraded and charged as a homicide, that we made an arrest on. And also on the 1st, we had a fatal crash on Trenton Road, which is thought to be caused by a medical emergency experienced by the driver. That's still under investigation, which kind of brings me to, you know, I've said this the last several meetings, I've encouraged the public to just drive safely. You know, the world is stressed by the pandemic that we've all been through, and people's driving habits have shown that stress. Erratic, responsible, distracted driving has increased nationwide, and we're no exception in that. So I would hope those who are listening can take a deep breath and just calm down and drive safer. And on a positive note, we reconvened our youth police academy this year, we did not run it last year because of the pandemic. This year, we started with a little over 60 cadets. The youth police academy is a 10-day program that we offer to the community, which allows young people in middle school and high school age to experience what it's like to go through an academy and work with or for emergency services. It's a service we provide at very little cost to the families, and we started day three today. Thank you.
Is that taking place at the high school?
Yes, it is.
Was Officer Jaeger back?
You know, this is his last, Last Youth Academy.
He's hurt, huh?
He is participating, he's kind of, you know, we're transitioning to a different leadership team, but he's there, and he, he retires next month, so this will be his last YPA for us.
Who, like, who are they training to take over to?
Sergeant Mike Callahan.
Ah, very nice, good. Great.
All right, any questions or comments from the board members on this report? Mr. Palmer, Mr. Rocco?
No. Thank you for the, for the update.
Galloway?
A great report, thanks.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 19, manager comment.
I have a few items for the board today. We have an escrow, two escrow releases that are being requested. Board is being asked to consider escrow release number four for MM Metals USA LLC at 53 Middle Drive, and an escrow release for an earth disturbance on 106 Rice Drive for $685.18. Both of these projects have been reviewed by Jones Engineering, and are, he is satisfied with their work.
All right, is there a motion for those two escrows to be paid?
I make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rocco, you want to pull the board?
Yes, Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
The township received a donation request from the following organization, the Historic Falsington Incorporated for Historic Falsington Day 2021, and that's going to be held October 9th, 2021. The township included funding for $6,000 in the 2021 budget for this donation, and the board is being asked to consider this donation.
All right, is there a, a motion to make the $6,000 donation to the Historic Falsington?
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
I'm a yes.
The Christopher Mensch Foundation is a nonprofit organization established to assist families of severely mentally and physically handicapped children. This foundation's completed over 25 projects throughout Bucks County to families with children with special needs. Currently, they are working on a project in Falls Township at 16 Yearwood Lane for a disabled child. They are requesting a waiver of fees for this project. The project consists of turning an enclosed porch into a physical therapy room and storage for medical equipment.
That's a good thing, any questions from, comments from board members?
No.
No.
Well, no.
Motion to waive the fees?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Lastly, we have, we received a number of letters of interest for various boards and committees in Falls Township. You have a copy of the memorandum listing a number of individuals, and I'm asking the board if there's any consideration for these.
Okay. I guess, we have one from Chris Avani for the Shade Tree Commission. I'll make a motion to appoint Chris to the Shade Tree Commission. I'm not sure the term length. I guess it's a full term if it doesn't say otherwise. Is there a-
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We also have Kristen Grapes for the Parks and Rec Board. She lives in Falls. I'll make that motion as well.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dent?
Yes, ma'am.
On the Parks and Rec Board, we have three letters of interest.
Yeah.
There are two vacancies.
Okay.
As you're aware.
Um, I was not aware. All right. What about the Historic Preservation Commission?
We have four vacancies.
Four. All right, so we have a letter here from Michael Brown and Donna Malloy as well, correct?
Correct.
I can do both at the same time, Mr. Clark?
Aye.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the Environmental Advisory Council and the Disabled Persons Advisory Board?
Environmental Advisory Council, there's one vacancy, and Disabled Persons Advisory Board, there are two vacancies.
All right, so we have one person here to put in for both boards, is that what I'm looking at?
That's correct.
We don't usually put them on both boards, do we?
No.
No. Maybe we can reach out and find out if there's a preference to which board, and we'll table that one. The Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee, Amy Gallagher, I'll make that motion as well.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have the Cable Advisory Board, a letter from Ian James, I'll make a motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Council, is there's multiple openings?
There's only one vacancy.
Well, let's, we have a letter from David Walsh for the EAC. We'll make the motion to appoint David Walsh to the EAC. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll go back to the Deanna Siderio for the Disabled Persons Advisory Board. I'll make that motion. Is there a second for that one?
I'll second that one.
All right, all, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And then Bobby Haddon, Robert Haddon for the Historical Architectural Review Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then there, Parks and Rec, there are two vacancies.
Correct, only two.
Did we appoint Jill Sabatino just did, right?
No.
We didn't, we're going to hold off on that.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then we did have a, go ahead.
I was just going to say, do we know when they put in?
No, that's what he's going to find out.
Okay.
Okay, that's that. Is there anything else for manager comment?
I have nothing else.
All right. I made a mess here now. That takes us to board comment. Mr. Galloway?
No comment tonight.
Mr. Baraski?
No comment.
Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, it's nice to be back with you guys.
Yeah.
Ladies, lady. Unfortunately, just to give you a heads up, I'll be not at the next meeting. I'll be in Missouri, moving Brady into college, so I didn't realize that. There ain't much I could do to change that anyway, but just giving you a heads up.
We have a high-bred version now, you can-
Zoom in.
Zoom in.
I'll try to zoom in.
Mr. Palmer, any comment from you?
No, I'm glad to be back, my second meeting.
It's hard to believe that, it's been so long that it's only your second meeting in person.
Yes.
The new equipment here seems to be working very well. The speaker up front is a big help. I know because Mr. Baraski and I are both half deaf. Yeah, so the hybrid system works pretty well. It's good to be back, and like Chief Whitney said, everybody, you know, it's hot out, everybody's in a, you know, stressed, just be careful driving, just be careful people walking, everybody's out and about. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.